Welcome to another edition of Minot Matters here at the Decoden brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. We are continuing our dive into the budget chronicles for the city of Minot. Looking at the city of Minot itself today, but also looking at Ward County and the Minot School Board. Today we're joined by Councilman Mike Blessam. Thanks for joining us today.
Good to be here again.
Absolutely. Always enjoy having you on. So the process for the budget started before you were officially a councilman, but you were definitely involved as a candidate in before. So you have a unique perspective on how you've approached the budget than what you will approach in different years, I'm sure. How has that process gone?
Well, I think it's gone great. You know, I think the, the city manager has done a nice job of opening this process up and, and really making it an interactive process, including the candidates. And that was, that was huge. I mean, if we, if we had to step in on July 1st and be thrown fully into the budget process and doing all that without having been in a part of it before that, it would have been very difficult. So, you know, I think the, I think Carol's done a nice job with that and getting everybody involved. The department heads have done a good job. And so we've been able to be a part of laying out, um, you know, the, our perspectives and our priorities and our philosophies on where we want things to go.
That's awesome.
So that the city, the city staff can incorporate that as they go. So I, I give them a lot of credit for that. That's been helpful.
So obviously in other areas of the city, it feels like sometimes things are done and not a chance for a lot of public input. It's just you find out about it on, on, in the Tuesday news. For this, do you feel like there has been plenty of accessibility for the public if they are wanting to engage in the, in the budget discussions?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, people, people have to choose to, to join the fray.
Right.
You know, if they, if they care about what they're paying, you know, it's important to vote and people did, but people voted in June. I, you know, in my opinion, at least the ones that voted for myself and Rob and Scott decided that a different direction was what was needed. And so they were involved to that in that perspective, but at the same time, you know, you gotta be a part of the processes that goes forward, you know? The council members get their ideas and they, they get a certain perspective on how things are going to go, but we need the public to continue to come and do that. And so we'll have our, um, our public hearings on the budget. Um, in, I believe it'll be in, in the September meetings. And so that'll be a great time. You know, there may be those that are not comfortable coming and being at the podium though. And I completely understand that. It's nerve wracking. It's not the easiest thing. So the great news is the city departments are also doing online virtual, um,
Awesome.
back and forth as well. And so I'd encourage people to do that. Those are coming up middle of the month here, 14th, 15th, 16th, something like that. And so if people do wanna be involved, that's another great way to do that. You can kinda, you can kinda be the keyboard warrior that some people like to be anyway. And you can do that, but interact directly with city staff, uh, live to get that, to get those questions answered.
That seems to be a very healthy approach. Um, a- as you've went through the budget tours and the different things, you've sat down with, I'm sure whether in a group sitting or one-on-one with department leaders and things like that, has there any, has there been anything that's really stuck out to you as you've gotten the inside look into the city?
You know, one of the things that the, the city, um, led by the city manager and the other, the other leadership members is really trying to promote is that when we think of the city government, it's not just this big bad, you know, black hole in downtown that's, that's running the city. These are our neighbors, right? These are, our neighbors are the ones that are, that are doing the work, putting in the time and effort into making the city everything that they can be. And I, you know, I've been very impressed by the caliber of people that we have at the city, by their passion for what they do and their intent to get it right. And so, you know, I think, I think it's important that we always keep that in mind, even though I may have a perspective on, on, you know, the level of service we should be providing at the city and the things we should be focusing on. None of that has anything to do with what the people themselves are doing because they're doing a great job and we need to take care of them.
When, when people look at government, um, especially the federal government, I think one thing that comes to mind is inefficient. As you've seen that and seen those people that are our neighbors, um, have you found that probably always room to improve in this area, I'm sure. But overall that we have a city that's striving to be pretty efficient in what we're doing?
I think so. I think, I think everybody there, um, would look at it that way. And certainly there's room for improvement. And what I'd like to think for me, the way that I'm approaching this right now, cause we're, you know, again, we're just a few weeks into our,
Yeah.
of, to a term here that since I was, I was sworn in. The way that I'm looking at it right now is I'm looking at structural things. Okay. I'm looking at things in the way that we, that we, um, and we do our accounting, not, not our, is the finance department doing the numbers correctly? Cause they are.
Yeah.
But it's in our approaches and, and one of the big ones is in, is in reserves. And you know, we can talk a little bit more about that. But when we talk about real efficiency and whether, oh, could we get by with six people instead of 10?
Yeah.
To me, those come later in, in future years for me.
Yeah.
And again, I, I think I would love to see the city department heads and, and the city manager with a big focus there. Because of a set of priorities and philosophies coming from council that they're doing that naturally. I think that that's exactly how they're looking at it. We just need to let that play out. So for right now, my focus is actually much more structurally, like what should our reserve levels be? And how much money should we be carrying at any one time? Because it leads to certain types of decision-making.
Yeah.
And that's really where my mind gets a little hung up on some of that. And that's a little bit of what people may have seen from me, um, you know, from the council is that I'm, I'm asking those questions. Why is it, why do we have this much money sitting there?
Yeah, that, that's a very interesting question that there's a lot of people that would like to know the best approach to that. So talking about some of those efficiencies, one, two of them kind of were entered, introduced, um, that has the potential to be an efficiency. With the approach that was taken for this budget, um, that was a zero-based budget and a multiple year approach to the budget. Obviously zero-based budget brings, starting at nothing and building your department budget from there, multiple year approach budget, uh, forces department leaders to look over the space of at least two years, um, when budgeting items. So that way things don't get missed. Were you excited to see or maybe excitement would be too strong of a word, but, but were you happy or glad to see these, uh, approaches taken?
So talking about zero-based first, um, I guess the first thing I would say is that the way that the state law mandates that budgets are built at the local level mandates exactly that. You always are building from zero and you start each year and you decide what you need for your baseline and your general fund and the actual government itself. And then you layer projects on top of that. And so that's a natural thing that should always happen. Now, my hope for what this was, was that as we were doing that, there was an evaluation of each position of each department, of each process and project and everything that was going on. And while I, I believe that that likely happened, it's gonna be a while before we can see any fruit from that. And the example that I'll give you is so, you know, early in my career, after college, I worked as a consultant at, at three M company in St. Paul. And in that, in that job, I was asked to go around from department to department over the course of a couple of years to do consulting, to identify efficiencies, to, to, you know, look for places where reorganization of resources or of, of leadership or whatever it was, um, would be fruitful because it would save money and they would, and they, you know, would result in a better result out the backend. When we did that, if we had come back and said, okay, I just looked at an apartment that has 450 employees in it and I spent about four months doing it. And I came back to senior leader, leadership and said, you know what? Everything they're doing is exactly right already. We've got the right number of people, except we just need to add these two positions and then we'll really have it.
You'd be fired?
I'd be fired.
Yeah.
And, and so again, that's where we're at at the city right now.
Yeah.
Those evaluations were done. We'd gone through top to bottom, every position, every project, every process. The result was two additional positions, the HR specialist and the, and the code reviews, or the, um, the plan review specialist that we're intending to put in place. So my hope, you know, certainly the city manager isn't gonna, isn't gonna, you know, be at a city council meeting and say, oh, I've, I've identified nine positions that we're gonna cut and that's how that's gonna work. My hope is that over time, that was what was identified and we worked towards it because nobody's saying, go fire somebody. But it does say, and this is another thing that I learned as a consultant and in the work that I did when I was at Delta Airlines, that anytime that there's a, there's a opening, somebody leaves a position, it's an opportunity every single time. Reevaluate, is it needed exactly as it was? Do we need to use it somewhere else? Does it need to be there at all? Every time that occurs, it's a new opportunity to revamp and get a little more efficient and align things. We have to do that because if you look at our numbers in 2012, we had 327 city employees. Today we have over 460 and we're at, we're headed for almost 470.
Wow.
By the end of this budget process because of the 12 new biota plant, um, members. And so again, our city is different, but the one thing that's interesting is our population hasn't changed much.
Yeah.
You know, we have road miles we use and all kinds of different ways of measuring how big our city is, but we've grown the city staff by 40% during that time. And so these are things, when I look at efficiency, it's not, oh, can I go identify jobs to cut? I'm, I'm not trying to take away people's jobs.
No.
But we do need to identify places where, wow, we've kinda outpaced inflation. We've outpaced population growth. We're, we're a little, we're a little strong right now, maybe. And, and I hope that this process identified that, even if we're not gonna see the fruits yet.
Well, how did we run 12, 12 years ago?
That's a question. Now, now I, one thing that you could say, and, and I, you know, I know in some of the other interviews, one of the things that comes up a lot of times is a deferred maintenance concept. And, you know, are we, are we behind on road maintenance and things like that? And so, you know, you could make a case that in 2012, during, you know, kinda the, the tail end of the oil boom, um, maybe we were lean. You know, maybe we hadn't kept up with how fast we should have been growing. And I think there's a certain point of that. But at the same time, I think we've kinda flipped the teeter totter the other way a little bit. That's a lot.
Yeah. Forty percent's a lot. Not many companies, and it's interesting to look at the city as a company. It should operate in some ways similar. Uh, not many companies double in size nearly without, um, having a, I would say double in revenue. But then that brings in the conversation of property taxes and sales tax and all that. Um, and so the metric is obviously a little bit different, but it's interesting for a company to double in size without having the, the output, uh, necessary to do that. That's interesting stuff. Obviously some of that is gonna be driven by the police department, which 15 positions now open positions, I think, cause there was one that was recently, uh, either he left or whatever. Only eight of those in the budget. Is this something that you're excited to see this approach taken where we have the positions open, but we're minimizing the actual fiscal impact? Because it's probably not gonna happen where we get all 15.
Certainly. And, and you know, during, during the budget tours, that was one of the main points that I was pushing and I've continued to push it. And so I'm glad to see, um, the city manager and his team take that approach and work with that, uh, because I do think it's a more common sense approach.
Right.
You know, one of the discussion items we had during the, during the staff, uh, discussions, I think, what a week and a half ago now, um, was that question, you know? If, if they have a great hiring year and man, we're at that point where we can actually get 15 hired.
Right.
I think we'd all be glad and we'd, we'd gladly sign onto the budget amendment that it's gonna take to do that. And with that in mind, you know, there was this talk of, well, man, it's gonna come from reserves. Well, you know what? We built the reserves on that concept.
Right.
There's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year at least that have come directly from overfunding police resources when we couldn't hire them. So we've got, in my mind, we've got a set of dollars in the general fund that came from that. If we end up using it that way, that will be the best possible use of the funds.
So, so you, you already alluded to it, but reserves, what, what in your month and a half you've been in, we have the, um, like state mandatory is like one 12th reserve. And I think our city mandate now is like three 12s. Beyond that, what, which, which we be looking at for reserves in your opinion? And I know it's way too early, probably.
Yep.
Your way too early estimate.
Yep. So if, if I had to look at it solely as what should our operating reserves be to be in a safe position?
Yep.
What I would say is I'd like to see us in the two to four month range. Okay. That's, that's the way to think of it.
Yep.
So if you think of how many dollars does it take to operate the city on, in a given month?
Right.
Take that and we should hover between two and four is the way that I would say it. And so right now our target is three, but here's what I'll say. So if we think just in the general fund, our target is three months. And if, if you saw a graph that the finance department and, and the city manager put together, on top of the three, then we have a 30% buffer, which is suggested by our bonding world. Okay. Now, one question, and, and this is one I'll be working with the finance department over the next week or two here to get my arms around this and make sure I've got it all right. But my, my, my thought on that is we've already got three months and then we add on 30% on top of that, which is about another roughly that again.
Yeah.
So now we're up to say about six months.
Yeah.
Okay. Just roughly. Then we've got another set in there that is, that is obligated to a certain extent, or at least it's, it's earmarked for certain projects as it goes on, which means that in the general fund, we've got another same month and a half there. Now we're up in the seven and a half range. And then if you noticed on that graph, there's another huge block. There's another roughly 30%, which takes us almost to a full year's worth of general fund dollars. Sitting in reserve in the general fund right now to the tune of roughly $48 million on a general fund budget of say 55, just as a rough number. So we're, we're almost at a full year sitting in the general fund. Um, and so when you think about that, and, and this is, this is an interesting point. In the 2023 year-end report, there's a note in there from our auditors at IBALEI.
Okay.
The auditors identified this because that amount that we're at is over $7 million over the statutory limit from the state.
Oh, wow.
The, the only law that's actually in state law is an upper limit for reserves because a city can't just build up a big piggy bank, right?
Right.
It's not legal to do so. It sets a level and, and what it is, I, I can't remember the number. I think it's something along the lines of 75% that you don't quote me on that, but it's something along those lines in the law. Our auditors had to put a note in our financial report for 2023 that actually called us out for being over by over $7 million.
That's crazy.
And now, you know, with that in mind, there's no penalty that, you know, nothing that I know of written in the law, which maybe there should be.
Yeah, right.
What I would love to see maybe is a law that says, look, the moment that that's identified, the checks start printing and they go out to the people.
Yeah.
Because it's a people's money.
Right.
And so, you know, this, this kinda gets into the, the overall thing I was talking about at the beginning, that my major concern right now is just our practices in those areas. Now, I think what we've got is we've got a finance director who's very, very good at his job. Okay. He knows what he's doing. He's trying to make sure that we stay on the right side of, of purchases that we need to do. You know, he's planning ahead for the, the city hall, um, the legacy city hall that we'll talk about in a bit, you know? So he's trying to make sure that we're there. And so I think what it's gonna take is, I think it's gonna take a little bit of discussion and sort of negotiation back and forth to get closer to what I'm looking for, you know, if I can get other members of the council to come along with me, but also leave staff in a position where they feel comfortable. Okay. Because I'm not saying let's run this thing so that man, a bad, a bad month in sales tax and suddenly we're under, right?
Right.
That, that, nobody has that intent, but here's the issue that I've gotten. This is really what this boils down to. When we've got $48 million sitting in reserve.
Yep.
And suddenly we have an issue with project B where we feel obligated to pay out $1.4 million. We've literally got council members up there saying, well, this is why we have reserves.
Yeah.
We've got the money, go ahead and pay it. When we have the Kemper land.
Right.
Available. Almost a million dollars. $920,000 was the dollar, a dollar amount on that. We've got the money.
Right.
It's in reserves. We can go ahead and do it. If instead of having, let's say there's $30 million unassigned right now. That's available for whatever project that we would need at any time. If there's 30 million there, there, you can do a lot of those, right?
Right.
You, you, the, the decision around, you know, three million more for the quiet zone with the railroad.
No problem.
No problem. We got the money.
Yep.
If instead of 30, we were sitting at nine and you're saying,
Right.
Okay. Spending this million dollars gets a little tougher at that point.
Right.
And I think that's where we need to be because you know what? The reality is the, the public, the people paying the bills here, they don't have that luxury right now. We're in a, you know, if, depending upon who you're reading and the things that you're seeing, we're at the highest level of credit card debt that we've ever seen. And it's, it's at a scary level.
Yeah, it is.
People are not at the end of their incomes. They're at the end of their ability to get credit.
Right.
And that's a scary place for us to be. The people need that back right now and we need to do that. So rather than leaving that money set aside for something in the future, I'd rather have it in the people's pockets until we need it and then we go ask for it. And you know what? There's a lot of philosophical things there. Should we be bonding then? There's a lot that goes into that. And those are the discussions that I will be having with finance as time goes on, but that's why my philosophy goes where it does. Right now, we're making it way too easy to spend more than we should be. And those are, you know, the railroad quiet zone, that's a, that's not even just a nice to have. That's a luxury item in my mind. Like, oh, we don't get the train whistles. Again, remember we're only talking about raising that by 5%? The amount of those we're gonna get rid of? We already got rid of 85% of the train whistles.
Right.
We're gonna go to 90 with this project and it costs $3 million?
Right.
Not now. I mean, we're, we are not in financial health as a, not as a city organization, cause actually the money is there.
And that's the problem.
The public, the public doesn't have the funds to do that right now. We have to take that into account.
So let me ask you this question then. I- is there an approach right now, maybe a mindset where when people are looking at the reserves that are in place? So city council and even, I think it trickles down to city staff too, um, where our, they approach it like their personal budget, which is if you had a year's worth of reserves in your budget and you needed to, uh, decide whether to rent or buy a new snow blower, that was gonna cost you a decent amount of money, but not a ton of money. Cause you have a year's worth of reserves, you're gonna go and buy a new one automatically. Cause you had the money, right? There's no thought into any other process. Um, do you feel like there's kind of that approach right now with, with the city budget? Rather than having that fiscal where, oh wait, this is not our money. This is the people's money?
I, I would say probably, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't think, I never put anything sinister to any of those decisions. Like I said, I think, right? I think that it's coming from a good philosophy, which is to say, save it up. So we don't pay any interest on a bond, right?
Right.
I mean, that, right? I think that's a, I think that's a great thought process. The trouble with it is when we hold on to that much, it, it allowed, like, I, I look at it this way. You talked about a snow blower. A snow blower to me is like, hey, that, yeah, we gotta. The question is for me is, okay, I've got my vehicles. I've got my car. I've even got my boat. I came across a decent deal on a brand new motorcycle, a closeout. Okay.
Right.
It should have been 12,000, but I can get it right now for eight.
Yep.
And I'm going, you know what? I got the reserves. I got the money sitting in the account. But if I had to go get a loan and it was right at the end of my, of my budget and I was choosing whether I might be able to go out for dinner one time this week or not.
Right.
It's a lot harder to justify the motorcycle, right? Right now, we've got a big bank account, so it's always buy the Cadillac, buy the motorcycle, buy the best thing we possibly can. You know, and, and a good example of that is the bus that we have in the budget right now that Rob brought up at the meeting. You know, one that he found, I hadn't seen it yet. I haven't got, I hadn't gotten to that page at that moment. But looking at that again, okay, yeah, we can get the bus and, and there's all this tie of federal funds and all that stuff. The way that I look at it is if there's a million dollars spent on that bus, I don't really care if we get 85% of it reimbursed. Because as a taxpayer, I'm paying it one way or the other.
Yeah.
It's either I'm paying through the federal government, whether it is my income tax or they're printing money, which is inflationary.
Right.
So now I'm paying, you know, $5 for a, a, a cup of Coke instead of the two that it should be at the restaurant, right? All the inflationary effects, or we're paying part of it locally, part of it state, whatever it is, it's all tax money. It's all the taxpayers' money or it's inflationary, one or the other.
Yep.
And so when we look at that, I go, well, man, wait, do we really need to go with the million dollar bus? Not to mention the fact that by the numbers we've looked at, we're at, you know, we're running buses with three people across the entire system per hour, not even per bus, across eight buses that are running per hour. There are busy times during school. There are busy times. And so the question that I would have is what if we went with buses more like the source, uh, base and transit ones? They're smaller, maybe a 15-person bus. Maybe they're, maybe they're 150,000 apiece. Maybe that's even a great one. We could buy two or three of those and still be way better off financially, run those on our routes when we have less people riding and be in a much better position.
Yeah.
Okay. If we had less money to work with overall and we're tightening our belts on all that, we make much better decisions then, just like we would in our personal lives.
Right. Absolutely. All right. So let's talk bus, federal funding. You've already given a, a view on that. Overall, an answer was given and I thought that Brian Herinka did a great job in his answer. It looked like he had researched things out. Well, not throwing any stones at him, but basically no, no strings attached to, to the bus if we use federal funding. Except there's a string attached to which bus you can buy. Um, and I think that's a big string. I think that's overlooked. Not, I'm not calling out Herinka. I'm calling out overall, like the federal, that's part of what the federal funding does. So whether it's that bus or whether it's someplace else in the city where we have to buy this, there's no strings attached. We just have to buy this. Like that's a string attached. And in my opinion, and somebody said that he, he addressed it. I don't feel like it was addressed straight up about the maintenance and any major issues of how the bus would be taken care of. Are you concerned about going and going into a hybrid deal because federal funding and, and going down this road, uh, wherever that ends up taking us? When we, we understand the potential difficulties in our climate, but also we're in the middle of nowhere when it comes to breaking technology.
Sure. And, and you know, that, that applies to the bus, but I, this is something that I've been saying a lot. And the, the interesting thing, I'm starting to hear it from others around the table as we're having discussions now. The thing that I always look at is the federal programs, whether it's this, the, the CDBG funding, all the different types of programs. And this applies at the state level as well. The federal program is always just good enough to, to make it worth it. Just, just barely.
Yeah.
Right? So again, the, um, the, the CDBG funds is another great example. 340 some thousand that come in. You know, my wife is saying to me, seriously? They can spend 20% of that on admin, just on administering the program? I'm like, yep, that's how that works. So you deduct the 40% right off the top or the 20%, I'm sorry. So you deduct that off because we're gonna use it to hire people to administer the program itself. Okay. So by the time you boil all this down, you add overhead for HR, you add overhead for finance, you payroll, fees, training, all the other pieces that go into managing that program, we're down to next to nothing.
Gotcha.
And, and now we've gotta go through all these different public input things, which are wonderful. We need those. But we're, we're, we're spending effort and time and all these things to get a little nugget from the federal government. So back to the bus as a different concept for you. So, so let's say it's exactly a million and that's the hybrid bus and we get 85% reimbursed.
Yep.
So our share is 150,000 headed in. Okay. As I just said, if we bought the right 15, 18-person bus and let's say it costs 150,000, but we've got no strings. We've got nothing else that we've gotta worry about and it's a better fit for our actual need on the street.
Yeah.
I'd rather do that and not have it reimbursed.
Right.
Because now we don't have a string attached anywhere. We don't have anything we need to worry about. There, to me, as I look at North Dakota is, is insulated to a, a great extent from the federal world. Mainly because we have great energy reserves and resources. We have a great egg economy in the first place. We have military, which is tied federally, which you gotta be careful about. You wanna make sure that they're happy. But the point is, is that we can insulate ourselves from a lot of the bad. You look at the 2008 crash. North Dakota wasn't as impacted because our banks aren't as stretched. They're not, they're not doing the same types of lending that many are. So we've survived that. COVID didn't impact us as strongly. The city came through it very strong, uh, you know, in terms of reserves, really didn't even have to push anything. When you think of that, North Dakota, if we started just saying, yeah, we don't really need that more often, we can take care of our own and keep everything here and not have any strings attached. And I really apply that to the state. The state is the big level because that's where all of our, um, health and human services revenue and all of our, all of our education revenue. All of that is tied. We've literally had legislators say, I couldn't vote yes, because we risk losing federal funding.
Yeah, it's a problem.
The moment we're taking, we're making decisions based on whether we could lose federal funding, now we're not doing the people's work and I'm, I do not like that. We need to, we need to insulate ourselves from that. And that whole discussion, it's one that I'm beating the drum with every time that's coming up. And whether it's meetings, you know, where we're just meeting with staff or we're in council, I'm gonna continue to beat that drum because the federal funds are not, are far from free, both in terms of dollars and in terms of, of, uh, of what that actually means for strings. You know, the other one, and I think, you know, I watched you guys in your recap, you guys picked up on that as well. I'm going to be pushing for projects that don't require upkeep out the backend of those CDBG funds. Because I don't wanna park that now I've gotta hire someone to mow. I want something that's one and done, uses the funds in a, in a proper way. And then we're done with it and we don't have any further obligations. If we can do that, then you could maybe convince me that that's worth it. I still would be skeptical, but at least we're not creating new burden.
Right. Yeah, exactly. I, I think that's an interesting thing to realize is, is the, the opportunities to buy new things comes typically with a price tag of maintenance. And that's something that you pointed out, um, but is probably overlooked a little bit more than it should be because we get, we like shiny new objects. I, I like those things.
And just, just one last thing on that. So the, the 12 new employees that are gonna go into the Nasbiota plant in Max, they're going to be city employees. They're fully city employees, just like if they sat in city hall and we're going to be paying for those. But then there's a reimbursement that comes from the federal government. Okay. Because this is a federal water project in the end. And so we're going to get that coming through. And the question that I, I asked, um, two meetings ago on that specifically was, that's all fine. So we're covering what's going on there, but what about all the overhead? What about the HR resources? Do we, you know, we're, we're talking about adding an HR specialist right now.
Right.
Growing the city means you grow all those departments, city managers' time, you know, staff's, other staff's time, finance everywhere. It sounds like there's a mechanism for getting some of the overhead reimbursed as well. And we gotta make sure that we stay on top of that. Because otherwise that's what it is. Yeah, we get 12 free employees.
Right.
But meanwhile, I had to add another three employees in other departments to cover and make sure they're covered.
Right.
And that doesn't add up over time. That, that does not pay off.
No, that doesn't at all. Um, all right. So we, we, we got into the nitty gritty real fast and there's more stuff we'll cover there. But before we do, I wanna go jump at a 30,000 point of view on the budget. What, what's your overall view of this 2025 budget that's been set forth? No increase in property taxes. If anything, on the city side, there'll be a decrease. Different taxing authorities may have different opinions on that. Um, but overall, what's your view?
So here's what I would say. We, we announced our candidacy, the three of us that ran together, uh, right at the end of January. So here's what I would say, we we announced our candidacy, the three of us that ran together right at the end of January. Within a couple of weeks of that, the city manager gave his state of the city address at the dome. And you know, the three of us were there, a lot of city leaders there, a lot of people from town were there. To his credit, Harold said, here's what we're seeing. And and a lot of that was coming from the satisfaction survey that was done as well, which is important, so there's a a feedback mechanism there. The fact that we, the three of us had entered the the race using those same messages and talking about those same items. I think that that brought some level of pressure to head in that direction. So city manager went that direction, that's a good thing. More importantly, he delivered on it when he brought his presentation, I give him a lot of credit for that. Because he had to work with city staff to work through that entire thing, the zero base budget, everything that went with that. And he did exactly what he said he would do and I give him a lot of praise for that, that's a good thing. Because now it gives us a baseline to start from where we're all on the same page about what we were trying to do there and to get us as a as a starting point. And now we'll nibble along the edges, we'll look at some other things and and there might be places, you know, we'll talk about wages here probably in a minute. But there's some things that we can do from there and you know, the bus is one, while that's maybe not directly in that number, like, there's a lot that goes into it. Because there, you know, we're talking about on the property tax side, a levy of about twenty eight million dollars. Okay, well, the entire budget is two hundred million more than that, okay? The property tax portion is very small, I think in this budget, it comes down to about twelve percent now, last year it was fourteen some percent. So it's becoming less and less and one of the things that I said during the campaign is that I would, you know, regardless of what everybody thinks about voting in November and people should vote their conscience on the property tax measure. Regardless of that, as local subdivisions and particularly us as a city, I want to see us lowering our dependence on property tax. For exactly this reason, it's the one that is hardest on people, in my opinion. It hurts the elderly who are trying to hold on to their properties and it hurts the youngest, you know, my my son and his wife, my daughter and her new husband. Both bought properties in the last couple of years, it's tough right now. It's really difficult to find something affordable for a young couple. And you add the property tax burden on top of it, it makes it that much more difficult. And so it, that's, that's why that that's all so important, so we're only talking about a sliver, that's why I'd like to see that continued to reduce. Again, the city manager, to his credit, did exactly that and so now it's up to council to work from there to find places where it might make sense to make some other adjustments to the budget, so I'm I'm pleased so far.
That's good, that's good to hear, is there anything, as you've went through the budget? Hundred and sixty eight pages of excitement, but to give credit to this budget, when you go and you look at the other taxing authorities like Ward County, mine at public schools, there's a lot of times very thin. Don't give as much context. Is there anything that stood out to you glaring that you like, why is this in the budget, what are we doing, is there anything where we can get this out of the budget, stuff like that, that really stood out to you?
Well, certainly, we we mentioned the bus, that's that's one of the easiest that there's, there needs to be a really good discussion around. You know, I I don't know that I would look at it that way right now, I think, I think what I would say, and another example of something that I'll I'll be talking with finance on relatively soon here is that we ended last year with about two million dollars in our reserves, in our sales tax pennies for dollars earmarked for property tax relief.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, and so again, it's another one of those places where I want to understand better, why are there reserves in property tax relief funds? Okay, and and the way that it was described, because I asked this question in the last city council meeting and and Jenna Zalinski from the finance office answered and she did a nice job, the idea is, is that, you know, if we're collecting more sales tax than we expect. We don't just transfer that in as tax relief right away, we hold it back because the budget's only asking for a certain amount of money. But that's another place where we can't just grow that forever, it's tax relief. And and the way that the ordinance reads is that it's a percentage of the sales tax dollars that go to tax relief. It's not a dollar amount in the budget, it's a percent that are that. And so we need to be seeing that relief, so there's things like that and again, just the overall dollars. Another concept that goes with that and the easiest way to explain is using something like snow removal, okay? In the in the city budget, we don't have a line item that says snow removal, as much as it seems like it would make sense to, right? Like, we say, oh, it's going to cost four million dollars to do snow removal this year, that's our expectation, we're going to set the money aside so we make sure we have it. Well, it doesn't work that way because it's buried in staff and equipment and all this stuff, it's all kind of built in there. But at the end of the day, you can think of it that way though, so we, if we have a year like we did last year where snow removal, you know, let's say we had four million dollars budgeted and we only used seven hundred thousand because it's just a light year, last year was great. If that was the case, the concept should be, when you budgeted snow removal the following year, you've got three point three million, you didn't use the prior year. So the new budget may be a seven hundred thousand plus a little for growth. Because maybe this year you need four point two because gas is up or whatever it is, right? But we're using that reserve to do that. We don't do that, though, okay? We let the three point three million go into reserve and then we budget a whole new four million for the following year, four point two for the following year. And that's part of the levy and the other pieces that it goes into. And so we're leaving that reserve and we're not utilizing it to actually help ourselves. And now, you, i- if you change your practice completely, it doesn't work forever, right? Because you you then do spend it down to where it should be. And then you're going forward and you're kind of back in that route again. But where we're at right now, the the teeter tire is so flipped to that side. Then we get into all the decision making things I talked about before and that gets frustrating. Because it makes everything way too easy, so that's why, like I said at the beginning, I, what I want to see is a a little bit of a reset in how we do things. So that down the road, we get to the point where we're actually looking at efficiency and trying to do some things there, but I don't think we're there yet. We just got a lot of work to do and how we handle the money right now.
Right, yeah, goes back to that structure you're talking about. So what about anything that stood out to you that you were excited that we are addressing, addressing in twenty twenty five, anything that stood out there?
So the two big things, one we hit on already, which is the way that we're handling the police openings that we do have. I think that's important and I've 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 asked for that because I I just want us to be realistic, that's the whole point. The second thing that I I am very pleased about is that we are putting money into roads. And so, you know, one of the things, and I I said this from the council, but I, you know, I have a, I have a friend in the legislature and in a discussion with him at one point, he said. He he doesn't ever find himself not voting for roads and bridges and that type of infrastructure. Because only the government can do it and if we are going to spend money, that is where we should spend money, right? That's, that is what government is for, those are the real basic things that we should be working on. And so I am very glad to see us going from eight to eleven million in that. You know, we've still got to look at it, make sure that everything else adds up and it's going to be the way that we want it. But the point of it is, is that if if the if the city engineer has this all right, which I believe he does. We should be digging ourselves out of a hole eventually, if we can do that. Where down the road, we get all of our our pavement indexes up and they're all in good shape. And maintenance is much simpler and cheaper and we can make all that work. Now, we're at a bit of a a crossroads right now with that because as we raise that dollar amount. We immediately run into shortages on the city engineers team. Because the thing about it is, it's not just the pavement, it's not just the road itself. You're redesigning curbs and and every ADA ramp and everything that goes with that. And so I asked him that in the discussion, at what point are we going beyond what his staff can keep up with? And he said, at eleven, we're about there, we're about max. So if we want to do fifteen million next year, we've got to take that into account. And so we've got it, we've got to be ready for that, but you know, one of the things that people asked about was they really wanted their roads to be better during in a satisfaction survey. I'm glad to see that we can hold the line or even lower property tax slightly, but still take care of the roads, that's a good thing.
Yeah, very, very cool. All right, moving into some of the more specific things, if I can talk. Consultants, something that's come up, interesting discussion had throughout the entire special budget meeting. Where consultants were addressed in the different departments and we found that they're used for random things that are not necessarily consultants, such as the airport parking at the airport, that's a service that's being provided, not necessarily a consultant, as you would think of it. But something that's often gets pointed out is that when consultants are brought up, it typically costs money. An example of that is with the pay plan that we'll talk about next, where an outside consultant comes in, looks at our pay plan, says, hey, you need to increase in order to be competitive. Going back to basically something that we've already talked about, though, why? Or are you open to a consultant going in and having an outside look at the efficiencies of the city then? And maybe even bringing up some of those position areas that, hey, we have, you have a lot of beef here, potentially, there could be some stuff that that's cut out. Whether that is positions through attrition and stuff like that, are are you open to something like that?
I I guess open is is a is a pretty big word, I'd be okay with it considering it, but what I would say first of all is that where, when I was working doing that work, because that's exactly what I was doing. We were typically brought in when something was dysfunctional, like, literally, you know, you had senior leadership had an inkling that something really wasn't working. And they couldn't figure out what it was and they wanted a fresh set of eyes and so we would do that. What I would say is, I don't see that need at the city. What I would say is, the process that that the city manager has started. If he continues that and and does the zero base and and sticks with that idea and sort of goes back through rejustifying and taking a look at that. That that should lead to that naturally. If you've got a good functioning leadership team that does not feel threatened by that. But you know, and and the way that I always look at that is, is that when you you, when you get a leader who is sort of really ready for their next step. It's when they can think bigger than their own team. So if you got a frontline leader that's got five employees and and you're talking about, okay, we've got the money, folks, to to add one person across six departments. Who should get that that person? And that person can look and say, you know what, I think John over there could use the person instead of my team. We can make it another year, I don't think he can. When they get that mentality, when they think bigger than their own team, is when things really take off. It's when you get a really high functioning leadership team. And I think the city is is right there, you've got a great set of leaders there. And so what we need to do is, we need to create an environment where thinking in that way is what's expected and a part of the culture. And I think that's where Harold is headed, I think that's what the city manager wants. But we've got to let that play out to a certain extent because I think he's taking those steps, which is why I say the future years may be where we show that. I would love for someone, someone, somewhere, anytime to come to the podium when they're defending their their budget and say, you know what? I've got two positions open right now in this type with some changes we've made, I can actually give one of those up. They're open right now, I don't need to fill that one. The city manager, to his credit, that's what he did with the economic development director in the city budget. And so, and again, that's, you know, that wasn't filled, so it's much easier when there isn't a person sitting in the job, right? But that's the point, that's why I said before, those are always opportunities. It's time to reevaluate, it's time to look at whether that's the right job. And I don't want anyone to think that, you know, my my main purpose here is just to cut jobs. But at the same time, I think we grew a little beyond our means for a while there. And we need to get the trajectory back on the right path and that's really what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's different than when the tech company says, next quarter, we're cutting two thousand jobs. And you're like, the whole company is worried, like, is this mine, that's not what we're talking about. It's something through attrition where, you know what, we'll just look at each role individually as it becomes open, so nobody loses a job per se.
Yeah, I mean, now, you know, you always say, well, that that's all fine and good until, you know, whether it's, I mean, we saw a covid level event, we've seen flood level events. I don't, I don't know what it would take to create the type of calamity where the city would go, oh, boy, we've got to, right? We've got to reduce by twenty percent here because we just don't have the revenue. You know, it would have to be a a sales tax collapse, unlike anything we could even imagine, really. If covid wasn't that, I don't, I'm not sure what would be. So with that in mind, we should always feel comfortable that we've always got what we need, as long as we keep things slim and and instead of growing, let's say at nine percent a year, pull that back to say three. You know, like, that's, that's the main thing for me, is just changing the slope of that growth right now, we just got to get it on track.
So talking about pay plans specifically then, obviously, we've discussed at nauseam here about the different options that are there. Basically, there's an option of no increase, there's an option of two point three million increase and there's an option in the middle somewhere. Most likely, the option in the middle somewhere is going to be what's taken forward. But I guess first off, I'm going to talk about how the pay plan is created in a minute. But but before we get there, when you saw that, what was your first thoughts as at the different options that were presented there and and about the need there?
So, okay, so I'll, to answer your question exactly directly, my very first thought was if the city manager brings a budget that makes sense to me, I don't mind leaving the full increases in. Okay, that 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 was my first thought. Because the point of that is, is that we're asking city staff to work with a city manager who's really starting to tighten the belts here a little bit. And so to not have to impact that felt like it would be a good thing if we could do it, right? You asked for the first thought, that was my first thought. Then after that, we go through the the discussion period with the HR director with Harold and they're talking about this, both of them in agreement that the hybrid plan is the most fair. I'd say that's where my mind is right now and in fact, that's what happened when we went to pass the preliminary budget, I tried to amend it to do that now. And I had a reason for doing that, I mean, I I played that a little bit in the discussion, like, oh, you know, I don't know how practice is normally done and but no, my point was, if I could lever, lower the levy, you know, we're going down to one point, a hundred and fifteen mils. That would have brought it down another two point seven.
And it can't go up.
If I could, exactly right, and if I could have brought that down to a hundred and twelve point three, that would have locked in our high point. And the reason, the reason that I was trying to do that then is, is that I suspect what's going to be tried is that the seven hundred thousand dollars in savings from the hybrid plan will get squished into another spot in the budget. And we'll still stay around that one fifteen level. And I was trying to head that off, I'll be transparent about that, of course I was. That's what my intention is in this, is to find those places where we can do that. And and you know, so a- as an example, last year, when we got a little bit of health, health plan savings at the last minute in the budget, because that comes in really, really late. Instead of lowering the levy and giving that back to the people, they just let it go into reserves. And they and they sort of said, yeah, that, you know, we're not going to re earmark it for something else right now, we'll just kind of let it go in reserve and we'll let it be used for the future. It should have gone back to the people. So that's what we're going to be pushing for this year, I think, is, you know, I'd I'd really like to see us take advantage of those opportunities when they come to give the people more of their money back, because right now they need it. And you know what, I think if we do it and we can get things back on better track and get a little sentiment going out there. They're going to spend it right back and get it to us in sales tax. That's, that's the thing, you know, the downtown business association, the discussions with them, you know, all the different things that go on. More discretionary cash in people's pockets means more spending in restaurants, more spending in boutique shops, more spending in those places that drive that anyway. It's, it's the, it's the whole supply side economics thing that comes into that. And so we need to make sure that people have more money in their pockets, that's what they're asking for right now.
Right, yeah, yeah, interesting stuff there. Something I was going to pull out, but I I failed in noting that, but all right, so pay plan, first thought, go full, after discussion, go to the hybrid. Which then brings up another discussion of, right now, we're on a seventeen step pay plan that probably will change eventually. Are we going about it the right way, though, where essentially time with the city is the driving factor and whether or not you make it to the next level in your pay plan, should it be more performance based?
I think certainly, I I think, I think everything that the private sector has to show about that shows that that is the the right way to go about things, you get the best out of your people. And and to be honest with you, one of the other things that it does is, if if somebody is not performing and they're not doing well and a performance review shows that and because of that, they don't get the 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 raise that maybe they were looking for. It starts to self-select those that are not performing out, because they choose a different path.
That's true.
And it makes sure that the best of the staff, the ones that truly are performing and and you know, in many environments, it's the eighty twenty rule, the eighty percent of the work is done by twenty percent of the people. And again, that, again, those are generalizations, nobody's saying that that this person is doing something wrong or that person is. But the point is, especially at the scale we are of over four hundred and sixty employees, that will play out pretty significantly if you head down that path. So I would certainly be an advocate of heading towards merit based and and you know, the way that I always saw this in business when I was in big corporations was leadership in each department was given a target or a dollar amount that they could work with, let's say it's, it's, you you've got four percent raises to work with across the board. You can choose to give everybody the same flat four percent. Or you can start making adjustments, you can reward a few of your people with with bigger raises because they're really performing and knocking it out of the park. And you might have a few that leg and they might get two and a half. And so that concept to me has always made more sense because number one, it would involve that department leader. You know, working with the city manager, working with HR to verify that they're all in agreement. But that, to me, has always made much more sense than simply saying, well, you made it another year, here's your and and that's the issue with it is that with the market survey way of doing this and the step change way of doing this. We literally are looking at, in some cases, eight to twelve percent increases for people. When, you know, for me in private business, working with my staff, man, if I can get them six, I'm feeling great that year. You know, because I can only move my rates as a business so fast, I'm trying to take care of our top performance, take care of the guys that that maybe are are doing more average. That's, that's the realities of business, we can't have our city outpacing that.
Right, so my understanding, there's no bonus that's given to employees, city employees. If you went to a performance based system for the raises, would you be open to also implementing a bonus structure, an annual bonus structure?
That one might be just a little, a little tougher for me to get behind. Be- because that is a place where it's not necessarily the same as 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 business, right? Because the the city, that's the interesting thing, I can do that as a business owner because I make a profit and that's what we're in business to do, right? So I can take a portion of the profit that my son and I, as business partners, would put in our own pockets and choose instead to give it to the staff, right? In government, the In government, the government is not in place to make a profit.
Right.
Government is in place to to break even at the lowest doll total dollar mark that it can. And so the thing that I fear a little bit is that is that there are mechanisms that could or would be used to try to drive that as a factor to make it happen. And I I don't think that that's healthy. I think doing raises on that basis makes a heck of a lot of sense. I think, and and maybe a way to put it is, any significant bonus program. You know, if I think of a leadership bonus program, you know, you've got executives, you're talking, you know, ten to fifteen percent to pay, even twenty sometimes.
Very large.
It'd be very large. That, I think, with the wrong person in place could drive bad behavior. That's not to say that, you know, like, I think we have some employee appreciation programs and and and, you know, great idea gets you something. Those are okay. And you know, I don't see that. What I don't want is, I I don't like the idea of of incentives that drive behaviors that get to the edge. I don't like that. I think that's, that's going too far. So I guess the basic answer would be no, I don't like a bonus based structure there. I think the pay should work that way.
So let me ask you this. Um, we're turning into a world that is driven by entrepreneurial minds. And the city's structure basically fights that, right? There's no, you have a great idea, you get a bonus, you know, and it's like the, I I think even if my memory serves me right, it's three M, like the guy that's created the sticky note. He has this great idea that makes three M something and he just goes on with his life, doesn't really profit much from it. Um, and like that kills that guy, like that guy made the, maybe not made three in what it is, but made that portion of three in what it is, right? Um, do you see ever there being a clash where you will, as the entrepreneurial mind continues to grow, mindset continues to grow, we're seeing a lot of more small businesses. It seems like in the last twelve to fifteen years since I've been in mine, there's been a, I I think mine was already driven on small businesses and that's only grown. Um, will there ever be a difficulty finding great employees with that, if that, if there's no way to uh make that flourish?
So it's interesting that you talk about three M because I worked there.
Exactly, right.
So, so I spent time there. So Art Frye, and then the the posted note, and he did that by putting, putting a piece of paper in his Bible and it kept falling out and he wanted to find a way to do that. And he worked in adhesives at three M and he came up with a a reseal, a restickable.
Yeah.
You know, that we know as posters today. Now, what I will say is that Art Frye actually did make out pretty good out of that. Now, that's not to say that, you know, he actually got a portion of the proceeds. That's not the point. But Art had a great career at three M because of that invention.
Okay.
And that's how that culture worked. Now, one of the things about that culture that was very interesting is that they they as a, as a, as a way of doing business, they had a string of over a hundred years where chemical engineers became their CEOs. Okay, with that, the culture was built that way. And so what they had as part of their culture was that you were expected and required to spend fifteen percent of your time on new inventions and things that were not related directly to your normal duties. So fifteen percent's a lot. I mean, you're talking almost a full day a week.
Right, right. That's one month a year, right?
Exactly. And so, and so that was built into their culture. But that's an eighty thousand employee company built on innovation and entrepreneurship.
Mm-hmm.
I look at the city, a city government, especially one our size, and I actually don't want it to be that exactly.
Okay.
That's not to say that I don't want good minds that are focused on efficiency and doing things well. What I want is people that are very smart, they're steady, they get it right virtually every time. There's a lot of pieces that go with that. To be honest with you, I don't see that in the great entrepreneurs. The great entrepreneurs are wild. They're, they're all over the place. They're inconsistent. They're, you know, they're throwing money at this. Oh, that failed. Now throw money at this. Let's see if this sticks, right? You know, you and I know those around around Minot and what those personalities look like. So when I think of what I'm, what I would like to try to attract to the city, it's not exactly that mindset. It's actually the the more, you know, I think of it as the typical engineer, which is a more steady Eddie, okay?
Yep.
Sit at their desk, they crunch their numbers. When they've come to the realization in their head that they're at the right spot, they sign off on it and hand it to the next person. That's who I'm looking for as a city, you know? And so, and so I'm with you because American culture is built on entrepreneurship, right? I mean, that to me is the epitome of what we are as a country. And we need to promote that in as many ways as we can. The city is one of those slivers where I think it makes less sense.
Yeah.
And you want, because not everybody is going to be that entrepreneur and we want to hire those people that are the steady Eddies that get it right.
So then going back to the uh performance plan, pay system or metric, not metric, but merit system. Um, would there be a baseline minimum that somebody would be able to get for a raise? Like, everybody's going to get a not truly staying up with inflation. But a cost of inflation raise where everybody gets a two percent raise, whatever it might be. Um, and then if you actually perform well, you you get six percent, whatever, obviously, we're just throwing numbers out there. But would would that system look like that? Or would it be like, if you don't perform, you're getting zero percent, you ain't getting a raise? If you do perform, then you you're going to get the good raise.
Right, so the back to the, back to the way that I've seen this in major corporations.
Yeah.
The path that I really like the best is that you work with your leaders, so you work with your department heads to say, take your roster, you've got four percent across the board to work with and line it out for where it fits. It needs to match up with what your performance reviews were, so they should have already received feedback on how they're doing and understand whether they're excelling or maybe lagging a little bit. So that when they get that, they go, oh, I got one and a half, but I also didn't get a particularly good review.
Yeah.
And and, you know, they're going to get ticked, right?
Right.
So that's, that's what would happen. But the point of it is, is that that employee is that that employee that's mad at management over the the review and then a a lower raise than maybe they were, they were hoping for, suddenly starts to say, maybe there's something better I can do with my life. Maybe there's something better I could go. That's the good version of that. You know, you don't want people to quit and stay in place, right?
Right.
And so, so I see that as okay, again, because every, every bit of turnover that we have, and I I'm not trying to put stuff in place that drives it, I want everybody to perform and succeed.
Right.
But if there are a few of those that happen, and I think in any organization, the people that work there can identify those, they know who those are.
Yeah.
They know who the people would be that would be fall into that category. So to answer your question, I'd, you know, I would hope that most department managers wouldn't say, look, I'm going to put this one at zero to make sure I can do a nine over here. I don't think it would be that. I think what it would be is, like I said, it might go down to like, okay, my lowest one is a two, so I can get a six over here.
Right.
I think that's how that works out. And again, you have, you have city manager, HR director, working with those department leaders to work through their plan. Because the other thing you got to do when you do that is, you got to have like, like jobs across the organization treated similarly. So that you don't get out of whack that, oh, this person handled it way different than this department manager.
I want to transfer.
Yep, you still have an approval process, right? But to me, that makes much more sense and it provides the right incentives for staff to do the things that matter. Because most of them already want to do that inherently, because it's, it's who we are as North Dakotaans and, you know, people from our country in the first place. We want to work hard, we want to do what's right, and we want to get it right for our city. So we reward that and the few that don't quite hit that, it becomes pretty apparent what's going on.
And and it it sounds, that part sounds brutal, but the reality with it is, they'll probably be happier when they do move on. They'll probably find another spot that they're happier with, that they do much better at. It just was not a good fit on both sides. And that's important to be looked at.
And a good, a good leader will be doing that.
Yeah.
Because the point of it is, if you've got somebody who is, who's doing a a reasonable job, they show up, they're, they present themselves well, they're, they take, they take pride in what they're doing, but they don't have the skill for a role. Now you coach them somewhere else within the city organization.
Yep.
You work with them to get them into a role that makes sense. Now, that's completely different than somebody that's shown up late or, you know, has substantive issues or whatever else could also come up. That's a different question. But a good leader that's got the tools available to actually do those things, that's going to naturally happen.
Right. That's very good. Do you see the ability, the ability is too broad, but do you see a likelihood? If you went to a performance pay, that there would be lawsuits that would pop up? Because it feels like, and let let me give you where my mind comes from, that feels like because it's the city, they're held held to a different standard than what a private business is, whatever. Everything is all about what did you do to the last person with the city, right? Um, fairness and all this, um, which is good to have, and it sounds like the process would would have that fairness. But do you just see that there being a vulnerability there to lawsuits?
There might be, but at the same time, I think, I think we would move past that much more quickly than anybody would even realize.
Okay.
I I actually think, because here's, here's the thing that happens in organizations. You have much more problem if you're not taking care of performers that are not doing what they should. You're going to lose your best people much sooner than you ever should. If, but if you're showing them that you're doing the coaching, and it's not that they see the direct coaching, because that's behind a closed door and you're taking care of that. But if they're not seeing you handle issues that everybody knows are there, it it demoralizes everyone. And now suddenly, your best performers are starting to say, my leadership isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing here. I'm, I'm handling, it's not just eighty twenty even, I'm handling ninety five percent of the work.
Right.
And my coworker or my coworkers aren't picking up any of the slack and they're not doing anything about it.
Right.
And I get, yeah, I get a little sliver of a raise here and there, but that's not cutting it. And so we, for me, I think people would grab onto that much sooner than we, you know, we get really scared of that kind of change.
Yeah.
One of the things you learn as a consultant, I did this for many, many years, I did a lot of that type of work. One of the things is that um, people adapt to change much faster than we think they will. And it blows over quicker than we think that it will. And most of the time, those that are the biggest, loudest people that are against it either select out because they they just can't deal with that, which isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Right.
Or they get on board because they go, well, wait, shoot, that didn't affect anything.
Yeah, and then they're an advocate.
Exactly, exactly.
So we we talked that in depth, and I think it was really great discussion. Move on to the final topic. That's the budget increase, twenty eight million dollar increase in the budget. Some of it, I use the word expected, what I mean by expected is that there was reserves for earmarked for those things. So it was expected to spend money on there. Now, why there's a twenty eight million dollar increase? Perhaps there's something else that could have been cut. You concerned, are you concerned about the increase in the budget as it presents on this year's budget, not increase in general?
Well, okay, so there's a bunch that goes into that. Number one, we've got Nas and and flood things that are always a burden on our budget, no matter what. And the sales tax pennies are directly funding those. They sit in accounts waiting to be used. So there's a big portion of that. Another big factor this particular year is that in twenty twenty four, we had seventeen and a half million dollars in the budget for Puppy Dog Cooley for the the rebuild that goes from Sixteenth Street by Green Acres over kind of by McDonald's, um, by the mall, right? So so that is, it all needs to be rebuilt. It's deteriorating underground. And so there were seventeen and a half million dollars in there. Well, we haven't had any disruptions up there, so no work has been done on that project. We're, we're still mired in easements and we just had something on the budget there or on the on the agenda. So that seventeen and a half million is in twenty five's budget again. So in a perfect world, we'd have already spent that and done the work.
Yep.
Now that's rolled over. So now we've got that and we've got another eight million, I think, in water, infrastructure and other smaller projects. So we're getting, you know, when you compare a hundred ninety nine million to two twenty eight, we're getting a little bit of double counting because of some of that kind of stuff.
Makes sense.
What I'm, excuse me, what I'm focused on more right now is, is what is the levy that we're sending the people? That's, that's the key. Um, you know, making sure that we're we're taking a close look at that, making sure that obvious items in the budget that we take a close look. The bus is the greatest example of that right now. We we take a look at that. And then um, the other thing is, is starting to look at some practices around how those reserves are working. So I'm not, I'm not particularly hung up on, oh, is it two twenty eight? You know, I think we'd all love to see it at one fifty if we could, right? But the interesting thing about it is, even if it was one fifty, it's likely that the one fifty became because, for whatever reason, we had very few projects going on that year.
Right.
You know, big capital projects that we've got, and it's a fluke and we're about to get drilled by the next three hundred. Mostly sitting in there anyway. And so, so I'm not as concerned about that big picture number. There was a time when I was, but as I've gotten in further, I understand the different funds and how everything's kind of laying out, at least to a certain extent now. And so I'm I'm sort of getting there, but it's allowing me now to hone in on where I really think that there are adjustments that need to be made. Because again, my long term goal over this four year term is to reduce and reduce our reliance on property tax. If we can move that closer and closer and closer to zero, now we're in a position where that is a much easier burden for the public to handle. And the city isn't as reliant on it. I mean, right now, we shouldn't be facing November with this big trepidation that, oh, they could take away our ability to collect property tax.
Right, right, right.
Right?
Yeah.
If we could get to the point where it's not really a big deal for us in the budget, doesn't matter what happens with that law.
Right. Very good. There's a lot more we could talk about, but we've already done it for an hour. So it's been good discussion. Thanks for joining us today.
Good to be with you.
Absolutely. This has been another edition of Minot Matters here at the DecoDun, brought to you by Shock, Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Be sure to like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the DecoDun community. Follow us along on our budget chronicles as we look across the various taxing authorities of Minot and break down the budgets for you. Thank you and have a great day.